I'd like to call this meeting of the Town of Reinbeck Planning Board to order. This is a special meeting, May 19th. We have a lot of extra business to do, so we thought an extra meeting would be helpful, and I'm sure you're all delighted to be here. The first thing I would like to do is ask for a motion to accept Art's meeting notes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
For everyone's, just to make sure everyone has both sets in.
Right.
There was an initial set of meeting notes last week, and there was a supplement issued this morning with respect to the Duffy project.
Yes. Okay. We have three public hearings tonight, and the first one will start in approximately three minutes. Oh, yes, correspondents and whatnot. I received an email today from Pat Corella saying that they will not be able to meet the performance bond requirement for the special permit site plan that we approved, and therefore the CSI project has expired and will not be going forward. I also have correspondence from, and I think, I don't know if you all got copies. If not, we'll see that you do get them, because you were supposed to get them, from Charlie Blakeman. We are referencing the Rockledge project, basically describing the discussion with the open house they had for the neighbors, I guess, a weekend or two weekends ago. If you don't have a copy, let me know, and I'll make sure you get one. I don't think I have any other correspondence that doesn't pertain to tonight's business. Oh, yes, I do. And you've all been invited? Bank opening? I've been assured that they're giving free samples at the bank. Free samples could be good. So we'll see how that works out. One you can only hope. Okay. Anyone else have anything else that's come up? Okay. Our next meeting, our regular scheduled meeting, will be the first Monday in June. I think it's June 2nd.
Correct.
And then we switch over, so everyone understands, in July, our meeting, our regular scheduled meeting from July through December is the third Monday of the month, so that we can avoid holidays, July 4th and Labor Day and things like that, so that we do swap over there.
At this point, in addition to whatever rolls over from tonight, you have three items on that next agenda. There's first, the continuation of the Red Wing hearing, and that will include the requested report from the Planning Board attorney. And then there are two new applications, a two lot subdivision represented by, and the Decola agricultural equestrian project, that those applications came in today.
Okay. Very good. Okay, well, I think it's time for our first public hearing. The public hearing, this public hearing with Paul Matthews for the lot consolidation on Old Post Road. What we were waiting for was the map, the survey map, from Marie Welsh. We have received that, and it appears to be, answer the questions about, yes, they do indeed have road frontage. It appears to have the proper information that we were requiring. Is anyone here representing this? Ah, of course, right in front of me. That's why I didn't see you.
Vote there.
Anything else that you wanted to add?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Any questions from members of the board? Any comments from members of the public? No.
Michael, I reviewed the, after another review of the application, a second look, following the meeting, as I said I would, and I have found no other issues, other than the changed note that I indicated I'd be requesting. Consequently, in your notes, there are both a draft Seeker Resolution and a draft approval resolution, accordance with standard operating procedure of this board. I assume you'll act on the Seeker Resolution, close the public hearing, and then move on the approval resolution.
No sooner said than done.
Page two of the, page two and page three.
The Town of Reinbeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on the proposed action, subject to an October 15th, 2013, application under Town Code Chapter 101, subdivision
Aye.
And I vote aye. Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing? of land by Paul Matthews for subdivision plat review and approval, as amended through
So moved.
All in favor? I mean, second? survey map entitled Dot Line Alteration Prepared for Paul W. Matthews by Marie T. Welsh, We got a second from somebody? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay. L.S., and dated April 23rd, 2014, to authorize the proposed consolidation of 3.570 acre We still have a couple of minutes before the next public hearing, so why don't I see if I can't do the resolution of approval for this project. parcel A, as depicted thereon and heretofore owned by the applicant with the adjacent lands The Town of Reinbeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows on the October 15th, 2013, application under Town Code Chapter 101, subdivision of land by Paul Matthews for now formerly Theodore Vanaciotis, Nicholas Vanaciotis, and Peter Vanaciotis. subdivision plat review and approval, as amended through survey map entitled Dot Line Hope I got that right. Alteration Prepared for Paul W. Matthews by Marie T. Welsh, L.S., and dated April 23rd, Described at L. 1864 P. 5 to 8, and depicted thereon totaling approximately 13.66 acres 2014, to authorize the proposed consolidation of 3.570 acre parcel A, as depicted thereon in the rural countryside RC 5 district. One, determines upon review of the EAF Part 1 and its own completion of the annexed EAF and heretofore owned by the applicant with the adjacent lands now formerly Theodore Part 2 in consideration of the criteria for determining significance set forth at Title Vanaciotis, Nicholas Vanaciotis, and Peter Vanaciotis, described at L. 1864 P. 5 to 8, 6, Part 617.7, see NYCRR. Proposed action is described in the application and being an unlisted action will cause no and depicted thereon totaling approximately 13.66 acres in the rural countryside RC 5, potential significant adverse impact on the environment and thus issues a negative declaration, being the subject of a negative declaration, determination of non-significance under Seeker, due before issued by the Planning Board. determination of non-significance, giving an environmental impact statement to not Approves the application for subdivision plat approval and authorizes the chairman be required and stating such will not be prepared. to stamp and sign the subdivision plat upon the applicant's satisfaction of each of the Two, authorizes the chairman to so execute the short EAF and directs the Planning Board below conditions and/or requirements within 180 calendar days of the Planning Board's clerk to file the short EAF with negative declaration annotation in the manner set adoption of this resolution. forth within Seeker implementing regulations Title 6, Part 617.12, NYCRR. One, modification of the note affixed to the survey map to acknowledge potential development Could I hear a motion to approve? of driveway access to Montgomery Street will also be subject to permits for town highway
So moved.
A second?
Second.
access permit and town wetlands permit. Any discussion? Do I poll the board on this one? Two, submission for review by the Planning Board as to the sufficiency and subsequent
Yeah.
Oh, I do, okay. recording the Dutchess County Clerk's office simultaneously with the filing of the approved Richard?
Aye.
We were chewing there, so you could. subdivision plat draft of the consolidation or merger deed whereby the intended consolidation Woody?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jesse? will be affected through legal instrument as cited within the note affixed to the
Aye.
Sharon? survey map. Three, submission of submission plat drawings in the number and form specified within Town Code Chapter 101, subdivision of land, including thereon, all required stamp, seals, and certifications. Four, stamping of the subdivision plat in the form required above as a non-jurisdictional subdivision or for filing purposes only by the Dutchess County Health Department. Five, payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due the Town of Reinbeck with respect to the submission, review, and processing of this application under Town Code Chapter 101, subdivision of land. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll poll the board. Jesse?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And I vote aye. You're done.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
It's always good to be first.
Okay. I think we're ready now for our next public hearing. Carolyn Blackwood, Grinnell Street, subdivision plat, special use permit, and site plan. This will be the continuing of the public hearing that I believe we started on April 7th and went on to May 5th. Tonight, what we're going to be doing is discussing, probably we want the public hearing, public comment, comment from the applicant. What we're then going to be doing is holding the public hearing open this evening, when the Planning Board will then go over the discussion of the objectives required in the Reincliffe Overlay District, as well as EAF Part 2, and then Part 3 as necessary. But we want to get the public hearings completed first, and at this point, what I will do is I'll ask if the applicant has anything further they wish to state. Okay, if you could. I'm assuming the microphone is on. I'm hoping.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can everyone hear me? Because I have trouble hearing over there.
Okay.
I would like to address the board, and I'm reading it off this paper, so that I don't forget anything.
That's okay.
This has been an arduous process for all of us. It's been very stressful for me, and it's taken an inordinate amount of board time. I would like to summarize the plan one more time and add a new detail that may help the board come to a positive decision. Our plan is to take off the ugly addition that was added to the original 19th century house and put the house back into its original architectural context. This traditional-looking saltbox-type house is what you will see from the street. A modern pavilion will be built mostly on the separate southern lot, which would be combined with the original house lot. The profile of this pavilion will be one story lower than the addition which is being taken off the original house, I mean, the addition which is taken off the original house. The pavilion will only be one story high on the street level and will barely be seen from the river, and the two parts of the house will be connected at the basement level. May I remind the board that the square footage proposed on these two combined lots will be far less than the amount allowed if these two lots were to be built on separately. Building the house here will cause the least amount of disruption of view to all my neighbors. While the pavilion will not in any way interfere with the almost 180-degree panoramic views the Haywoods enjoy from their house and grounds, they did express three concerns which I would like to address. When I visited Harry and his wife Annie, and we talked about my plan, we looked at the height of the pavilion, which had been staked out, together. We looked together at his winter north view, which is hidden by trees and leaves during the spring, summer, and fall. We looked through the north-facing window in his living room and from his porch. Because the Haywood house is situated on a much higher elevation, we all agreed that this limited north view of the river and mountains, as seen through the trees during the winter, would not be impeded and could still be seen over the roof of the pavilion. Harry then expressed concern that his view of the back of the pavilion would leave him looking at a concrete wall during the winter months. I gave Harry my word that there would be mitigation using foliage. I also promised to keep the foliage from growing taller than the roof. He and Annie were greatly relieved to hear this. The only other hindrance to this plan for the Haywoods is the proposed garage apartment, which would impede on the side view to the street from their garage apartment. To expedite this whole process, I am now willing to take building an apartment over my garage off the table. In doing so, the view from the Haywood garage apartment will remain the same, as well as the essential footprint of my existing garage. Kept to the south, the more modern pavilion will not be seen from the street, as it is to be hidden behind hedges. These hedges are necessary for my privacy. Without the hedges, the new house will be hindering the view anyway, and I will have no privacy. Hedges, even on properties with river views, are common in Reincliffe. These hedges are not setting a precedent. But still, in exchange for allowing these hedges, I am proposing another give-back, that being that I combine my third lot with the other two and keep that one vacant. This lot has the most beautiful view of the three that I own. It is park-like and beautiful. Keeping it open in portuity would guarantee my neighbors Kitty Pilgrim and John De Nota the beautiful views from their houses over my land, and guarantee their views will never be blocked. May I remind the board that I am paying taxes on and giving up the potential of a very valuable building lot. This is the big view from Grinnell Street, and it would remain open on the street for all passersby to see. I will be asking permission for a legal, low-stone wall, fence, or bush to use as a demarcation line to keep trespassers off my land. I am told that if someone were hurt on my land, I would be held liable. I know change is hard for everyone, including me, but I do think I am giving back to my neighbors and the community as much or more than I am asking for. I hope the board sees fit to pass this plan, and that the grand view can remain open for all who pass by on Grinnell Street to enjoy for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you get a copy of that?
Could you give a copy? I guess.
Can I type up a nice one?
That would be fine, just so we'll have it for the record. Thank you. Other comments from the public? Yes.
Hi, my name is John De Noter. I live across the street from the third parcel, and this new development's pretty encouraging. I just wanted to say I'm in agreement with the three and to one, to make the project doable. I'm agreeable with the removal of the apartment, because that brings the square footage down. I'm happy with that. A low wall, something about a foot high, just to keep the cars off, would be acceptable. I don't want any additional vegetation on the north lot. It just leaves things open. We want the view open, and I'm concerned about the view on the north lot, so the hedges will grow and so forth. The low wall would be more acceptable. So if all my neighbors are in agreement, especially Haywoods, I think this is a big development for the Haywoods, and hopefully acceptable for them, I would approve and sign off on the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak?
I'm Wendell Smith on James Street, just around the corner. The view doesn't affect me immediately. It affects me as I turn the corner, but it affects everybody who walks, everybody who jogs, everybody who goes by the property. And the word "hedges" that I'm hearing used here still is a nebulous term. I'm after just keeping that view as open as possible. I think the construction's great, no problem with that at all, but high hedges for privacy that go beyond what a walker would see, so that it blocks the view and impedes the view, I would be against 100 percent.
Would you like to address this gentleman?
Well, actually, if you come back to the microphone, you can address the board, if he's done.
Well, I'm done until I hear what's said.
Okay, well, then you can come right back up to the microphone.
I just want to reiterate that the view that is the big view would be kept open, and that the view that is being talked about to be behind the hedges will be blocked by the building.
And I just want to reiterate that there's a dangerous precedent that can be set here by allowing a very high hedge. And so, the last I knew, we were talking about 11-foot hedge. Anything like that is a precedent that's set, and then later on, someone down the road is going to say, "Look what happened up the road. I want the same right." And then they're going to get a lawyer, and we're going to get into a hubbub over that. I think it's wrong, it's inappropriate, it should not be allowed. The building, fine, but not the privacy hedge, because it's right on the river. And I want to reiterate, I put up a four-foot fence, and they wouldn't let me put a point on each of my posts, because it went over four feet. They refused to let me put a post with a little top on it. They said, "Keep it at four feet, put a flat top on it." So that's what I had to do. Right around the corner, no river view, except from the deck on my barn.
Thank you. Only if you wish to.
I think I've said what I want to say.
Okay. Ryan?
Hello, Ryan. Hello, Ryan Dunn, CAB Chair. The CAB would just like to request a landscape plan, if any have been submitted with the application. That's the only thing we seem to be missing.
I think it's a landscape plan we would want, and I believe also, for a complete application, we usually also have to add the engineering, so that that can be approved as well. So there are a couple of things that will be required.
I thought we had that, but.
We're requiring a landscape plan for a residence?
A special use permit, yes. It's a condition of a special use permit. If it was simply a building permit outside the town that did not require special use permit or site plan, no, then you wouldn't. You just need a building permit.
I guess that's the first time I've heard of any landscape plan being requested. So another one?
Asking one of the Duffy.
I thought it did, yeah. I thought it did. And also, Richard, in the presentation we're going to get later this evening from Mr. Duffy's people, the landscape plan is a principal element of their proposal.
That's fine, that's Mr. Duffy's project, but this is a small residence in the middle of Reincliffe. I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Right.
So, landscape plan is a requirement. Okay.
It is, in this particular instance, yes.
And for what reason, in this instance?
If there are improvements proposed, they are to be shown on the site plan, is what it amounts to. So in this particular case, landscaping is among the improvements that are, among the proposed improvements, therefore, the landscaping is to show on the site plan.
We've had three things discussed. One would be the hedge, the privacy hedge. One would be some foliar screening for the Haywoods of the side of the building, and the other is either a wall or a hedge of some sort along the third property, just as a demarcation about where the private property starts, just to keep people from going, so.
Right now, under the use, what is, like a stone wall, a low stone wall for the north.
That would be preferable. That would probably be preferable. And what we will need, when we get to that point of approval, we will need everything that is actually going to be done on a plan that I would then be able to stamp and sign. It would all have to be, just so you won't, we do understand that, that that would be the final submission we give to us after our discussions, whatever. That would be, and the engineering that we would need, that we would submit, that goes to the Health Department for whatever you're doing with sewage, if anything at all, beyond what you already have on site. I don't know.
And that wall must be four feet or less in total.
Correct, yeah.
I mean, that's the zoning law requirement.
Right.
We would just like to comment, just based on just species, obviously, to complement the hamlet, but also for longevity, that, you know, they don't die out, or they don't die in five years. The CAB just likes to advise on specific ones that could be used, whatever, landscape.
I have to say that since I've decided to approve the protocol, which is 20 years ago, I am going to have to go to the feedback on that.
And I did notice your neighbors were already saying they've been eaten by the deer, so I do know you have deer in Reincliffe now. Congratulations. Any other comments from the public? Okay. Any questions right now from members of the Planning Board? You guys are going to stay here for when we go through the workshop session a little later this evening, correct? Well, I hope you will.
There will be a later action?
Yes, yes.
I have a question. Why is this remaining, why aren't we closing the public hearing at this?
Because we have to complete Seeker, and we have not done Part 2, let alone Part 3 of the EAF.
Chances are we'll close it later this evening, if all goes well.
Chances are, if things go well, but we have to complete Seeker.
I think, my personal opinion is, I think, what's being done, what's being offered up, is tremendous, because by no means does she have to take a third lot, which could have a building on it, and combine it, and offer it up, and I think it's very generous of her, and I think the neighbors should be very happy with this.
Sounds like they are.
To sit there, no offense, John, but to sit there and say, "Well, I only want a one-foot wall,"
Okay, Richard, John, look, we don't have discussions.
I'm commenting here. Please let me finish.
You may comment, but you are not going to have a discussion.
All right. To have someone sit here and say, "I only want a one-foot wall," is getting a little out of control. We have zoning laws, they will be followed, and that's all we're allowed to do, is follow those and enforce those, not make up our own and let's say what's going to be best for the neighborhood. It's, you know.
Public comment is permitted. That's what this is.
As is mine.
Yes, yours is, Richard.
I'd like to address this. Yes, fences have a 15-foot setback on the frontage. So if you want to enforce, you don't want to negotiate, put it 15 feet back. That's the law. Don't even need, don't even need to come before this. Just file a permit 15 feet back from the road. Wouldn't do that to the lady. It doesn't look right, it isn't correct. She just doesn't want cars to go up there. When I sit in my living room and I look out, there's a horizon at the end of the lawn, and I see the river from that. One foot would keep the cars off. And I am, I am finished, please?
Richard?
May I speak?
Really?
Yes, you may.
There's a horizon of the lawn and the river, and when I'm in my living room, two feet begins to take that away. Okay? I would personally be happy, like I said previously, with one foot, it could be close to the road, so it goes along with what's going on on the road. I would be very happy with that, and I would approve the project with the three and to one, and no change in the shrubberies, no enhancements with trees, no hedges, because on the third lot, that can get out of control. That'll maintain an open view and the way it is. I think she'd be happy to keep cars off from parking on the edge. One foot, two foot, one foot works for me, okay? And I'm happy with that, and I'm very happy with her concession to the Haywoods with the garage and the apartment above it. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
And we will be discussing all these different aspects after our next presentation. That's why I'm hoping you guys will stick around, so we can do that. Any, yes?
I second once and want you to exclude yourself from the board, because you seem personally involved. Richard seems to be arguing for the person, so I want to know if that's the same option that you can exclude yourself when the vote comes.
Would you like me to respond to that? I don't think you have a right to tell this applicant to do what you're saying to do. I think you need to open up your checkbook.
You're talking to John again, directly.
Excuse me. I think the neighbors need to open up their checkbooks and perform what's called a visual easement. Get your money out and say, "We are willing to pay you to keep that wall down there," because that's what normal people do. Instead, you're setting a precedence in the hamlet, so every time someone does something, all the neighbors get together and decide, "We're going to design it for you, because we don't want to have our view obscured." And I think that's wrong.
Are we about personal attacks?
Okay.
John, don't.
I'm sorry, you asked me a question?
No, no, I didn't ask a question. I had the board a question. Can you exclude yourself from it? Because obviously, you're personally involved.
I have no personal involvement here.
Seems like you do.
I'm very passionate about seeing that things are done properly, and that people's rights aren't stepped on.
Now you're addressing me directly. You're supposed to be addressing the board.
Are you looking at me while you're asking me that?
Are you on the board?
I'm going to have to ask.
Are you attacking, are you on the board? Yes or no?
Sit down.
Excuse me? Did you see that?
Yes, I did. What I'm going to.
That's very derogatory. This, he's making the situation a lot worse. It does not have to be like this.
No, it doesn't.
We are trying to work together as neighbors.
No, it doesn't.
All these neighbors have come together to work together.
What am I missing?
You're obviously missing a lot.
Ladies and gentlemen, the public hearing is to take public comment, is to take public comment.
Not personal attacks.
It is to listen, it's for the Planning Board to listen to public comment.
You're arrogant. You're arrogant and out of control, and you just said that John's out of control. What is this?
Please, let's not, let's not get, let's not go any further into this. Let's not go any further into this, okay? Really, personally. The purpose of a public hearing is to hear what the public has to say, and they are entitled to say whatever they choose to say. That does not mean that the Planning Board is compelled to follow what they say or anything of that sort, and I think that needs to be understood. That's what the public hearing is for, is not for the Planning Board then to debate with people, giving public comment. That's what we do later in a workshop session, which we're going to be doing later this evening, or we do, subject to the public hearing being closed, and then we talk amongst ourselves what we've heard and what we feel is the appropriate thing to do.
Should the board, professional stuff?
We do our best.
Are we about personal attacks?
I don't think let...
John, don't.
I'm sorry. You asked me a question?
No, no, I didn't ask a question. I had the board a question. Can you exclude yourself from it? Because obviously, you're personally involved.
I have no personal involvement here.
Seems like you do.
I'm very passionate about seeing that things are done properly and that people's rights aren't stepped on.
Now you're addressing me directly. You're supposed to be addressing the board.
Are you looking at me while you're asking me that?
Are you on the board?
I'm going to have to ask...
Are you attacking me? Are you on the board? Yes or no?
Sit down.
Excuse me? Did you see that?
Yes, I did. What I'm going to...
That's very derogatory. This, he's making the situation a lot worse. It does not have to be like this.
No, it doesn't.
We are trying to work together as neighbors.
No, it doesn't.
All these neighbors have come together to work together.
What am I missing?
You're obviously missing a lot.
Ladies and gentlemen, the public hearing is to take public comment. It's to take public comment.
Not personal attacks.
It is to listen, it's for the planning board to listen to public comment.
You're arrogant. You're arrogant and out of control, and you just said that John's out of control. What is this?
Please, let's not, let's not get, let's not go any further into this. Let's not go any further into this, okay? Really, personally. The purpose of a public hearing is to hear what the public has to say, and they are entitled to say whatever they choose to say. That does not mean that the planning board is compelled to follow what they say or anything of that sort, and I think that needs to be understood. That's what the public hearing is for. It's not for the planning board then to debate with people, giving public comment. That's what we do later in a workshop session, which we're going to be doing later this evening, or we do, subject to the public hearing being closed, and then we talk amongst ourselves what we've heard and what we feel is the appropriate thing to do.
Should the board add professional stuff?
We do our best. We do our best.
Do you have to address the board?
Yes, you may.
In this comment of paying for the easements, I read all the zoning laws, and I'm sorry I didn't bring it in today. There is a place where there's a negotiation process, and there is considerations, and it mentioned nothing about cash, you know, about scenic easements and so forth. The other issue is, is what people seem to forget is, this is the Hudson River, and many other references go into other laws, go into other areas. It is the Hudson River. This land lies between the road where the people are and the river. If it was on the other side of the road, I don't believe there would be this big of a deal, you know? So people look over this constantly, and it's the river. It's a historic district. It's a scenic district. It appears on scenic map number four. It's mentioned in a comprehensive plan, this particular land up there. Okay, so it's not the average property. And there are, I'm going to, next meeting, I will have the law with me. It doesn't mention about cash. It's just part of the give and take that happens when you go forward, you know, for approval. You know, I want this, I want more footage, I want the fence on the street, I want the fence not so far back. These are givebacks. It goes back and forth, back and forth. I think we've gotten almost there, almost there. And the big switch now with the garage is a big deal. It's a very big deal. I hope the haywoods are happy. But there is an issue with the height of the wall when I'm in my living room. It does impact on the horizon outside, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping that maybe it could be one foot, and that would resolve that. The rest of the project, the reduction of the square footage, the removal of the apartment, her keeping her old garage by the new garage, I think that's a home run. I think it's a home run, and I encourage the board to sign off on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And all these comments will be taken into consideration when we discuss this a little later this evening. Any more comment from the public? You want to say?
Yeah, I have one comment as the board's advisor. The board will not be in a position this evening to close the public hearing on this particular project. There need to be amended applications submitted. The application for subdivision plot approval, that's before, I should start by saying, I think the applicant needs, should be commended for the very, very substantial concessions and changes that have been proposed. However, the presence of those changes creates a need to amend the applications that are before the board. The application for subdivision plot approval for consolidation deals with two lots, it does not deal with three. The application for special use permits and site plan deals with the removal of the garage and the addition of an accessory apartment that is obviously going to be now removed from the project. The applications before the board do not take into account the design and the installation of the stone wall. So all those items, the project as it, as it is now considered to, or the applicant will now consider it to be proposed, needs to be set forth in those applications. So, and on that basis, the board would then be in a position to close the public hearing and decide the applications, which is no different than the next project on the agenda where substantially amended applications are coming before the board this evening.
Right. And it's hoped that at the workshop session tonight, we'll finalize exactly what the applications will entail. So we'll be in a, well, we do hope that we will be able to then, we will then have actually the final applications, the final site plan, the final everything, and then we will be in that position. Art is correct. There are modifications now which aren't before the board in the form of applications, which were being discussed tonight, so, good point.
May I say something?
Yes.
It'll probably come out in the workshop, but on the south end of the current structure, there's a stone wall that appears to be, I'm just looking at the picture, appears to be like 18 inches above ground. That's the type of wall you're talking about for the north portion. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. That's, I would imagine that would fit into the neighbor's acceptance, and it's a nice-looking stone wall.
Any other comment? Everyone is welcome to the work session afterwards. It'll be between the planning board and the applicant and the applicant's advisors and whatnot. We will then be receiving, hopefully subsequent to that, the final application detailing all the actual applications. Technical difficulty has been resolved. Okay, we're going to hold open the public hearing. We'll be holding it open, I believe, to our June meeting, at which by we'll have the final application, and hopefully we'll be in a position then to finalize all of this. So that'll be at 6:40? Right?
Can produce the revised materials, the amended materials, which will be presented before.
Yeah, right. Now, we'll see how we go tonight.
Yeah, we'll see how the, you know, yeah, it doesn't, doesn't appear to be terribly, terribly time consuming.
Did I hear, I think I need a motion to continue the public hearing to June 2nd at 6:40. Did I hear a motion? Second? All in favor? Very good. We'll be with you in a few moments. Our next item this evening, and I believe, oh, our next item this evening presentation is for the Mr. Duffy's project on River Road and Carmel Drive. I know that we've received a significant number of revised applications, special permit and site plan for the planning board, and I know a series of applications have also gone to the zoning board of appeal for the necessary variances.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Van Tyle, and with me is our architect, Christopher Courtney, who's setting up a PowerPoint presentation. What we have to hand out to the board and to the public is copies of that presentation so that you can have a prior reference. I also want copies for the neighbors. You might find a helpful to your chairs or in your office.
We'll just look at the handout. Weather in the years, it's got to be 30 or more.
Yeah.
I'd like to be down in Southern Dutchess in the little orange counties.
If you remember, we made a full presentation late into the evening on April 7. In response to a lot of comments that we had received expressing concern about certain of the elements, actually, every single element of this project has changed. This aerial photo is designed to give you an idea of the Duffy property in the context of the river and all surrounding properties. So Christopher, if you want to just outline the Duffy property and the frontage on River Road and the river. We see the driveway coming in on Carmel Drive, and then the secondary southerly driveway that's shared with Astor Courts. You see the very large building of the Ferncliff Nursing Home, and you see the Astor Courts building to the south. And then at the project site, we see the Duffy home. And going a little north of the house, we see the... ...of that proposed glass house. And then, in the driveway portion of the house, we see the proposed barn, place that existing shed that's in the west. That is an orientation. I'm just going to summarize what has changed about the application, and then what Christopher is going to run through is a... ...visual simulations that we've done. And I hope I'm not blocking anyone's view of the screen. I'll step out of the way in a minute. First, to begin on the way into the property, barn two. There was some sense that some people thought that barn two was a little bit too large. It was over 2,000 square feet in area, and it had usable space on a second floor. The size of barn two has now been reduced to 942 square feet. It is solely... Moreover, it is now proposed that that building be faced in stone to fit in with the historic landscape, and Christopher will show you some proposed elevations of that. Property, the accessory storage barn that's called barn one at this point, as you remember, is proposed to be converted into an accessory dwelling. What is now proposed with respect to that building is, there was some concern about the bright cedar appearance of the outside of that building, and so we're now proposing to face that building with stone, similar to barn two, so that it will be much more subtle. We're intending to use the vocabulary of local stone barns. Christopher, again, will show you an elevation and some, some models of what that barn will look like. Another big change at this point, in the revised applications submitted on May 5th, barn one is the only accessory dwelling. It's the only accessory dwelling that will have a kitchen. The other two guest quarters, the pool pavilion and the glass house, have been modified. The kitchen facilities, although they were very small, they were sort of, sort of like what one would find in a hotel room, but they've been removed so that these guests...
Oh, he's, he's, that is...
There was some question raised, I believe by the zoning board of appeals. ...that Mr. Duffy had it removed within the last six weeks or so. So the applicant is proposing that those lots will be consolidated, forming one single lot, so I think that answers that question. Additionally, there was some comment made that the stone wall along River Road is in disrepair, which I think you... Maybe we can just let her finish, though. Are you close to finishing your presentation?
Don't touch it. It's not, it's not making any noise.
That's pretty good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't anyone move. Oh, shit. I'll just turn it off. Is that, I'll turn it off, is that okay?
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah.
We have at the same time deposed that we need additional permits, and so we've prepared them and submitted them with our make-up application of these deals with the special permit for the hillside work, permit to repair the wall on River Road, and the lot consolidation. These were before you before. We did have the other applications, in essence, we've made them a little more robust in this most recent submission. And as you stated, Mr. Chairman, this application requires several variances. Notably, the law sort of assumes that the front yard is on what is closest to the road, and so we need a variance to place the pool, the accessory structures in front of the house, effectively in the front yard. Our total accessory structure square footage exceeds 1,500 feet. Again, this is a standard that applies throughout the town on all side lots. We require a variance to have a second guest cottage, the long we put it's one. And if you'll know the location of the accessory dwelling barn one, it's that cedar building that's there now and will be refaced, we're proposing one parking space at that accessory dwelling, but that parking space doesn't comply with a provision of your code that requires all parking for accessory dwellings to be at least 10-foot setback from the front facade of the principal dwelling. So we'll need, we'll need a variance for that. So those variances will be completed and filed on Friday. We hope to be before the zoning board of the June 4 meeting. And at this point, Christopher will show you the results of some visual analysis that we've done, just so you can hear us that the word and neighbors also understand the visual context of this. We have some photos that were taken with the cooperation of neighbors in a week-long condition, and also photos taken of the view of the site from the river, so that it provides all of us with a context to analyze the visual impacts of the proposal. And at the end of tonight's hearing, of course, comments for the public are welcome, but we would ask you also to schedule a public hearing on our new submission for June 2nd.
Mr. Corvitz, I think that the staff have mentioned you also have submitted a bit of weather information.
Thank you for mentioning that. That would be one of the planned public hearings we would like to propose. So I'll turn it over to Christopher now for a discussion of this one.
So this is a slightly closer view of the main area in front of the house. We've got some sort of clearer landscaping elements to plan, so anything that's in dark green is already existing, and then all of these lighting are new, newly chose trees, all of which are garden-owned, um, of sizes and sizes, and we have much of that submitted. So you can see, there's a good amount that were actually planted last fall, as well as some that were in existence, and these light green ones are also being composed here for the South for recovery. There is landscaping all around the pool as well, and none of this has changed since the last thing, and just a note there on the front. This is mainly just to show sort of views on the different properties, so you can sort of assess and draw, and one hundred per per road. All three of these shots are taken from the same point here, just looking in different directions. So this is looking to the south here, this is looking basically directly to the left here, moving some paths into the north here. So these could effectively be an eighty degrees, that's more mine. We did do a quick, so you can see these, these sort of holes that are, quick installation of whole little red spots at the top that show the proposed buildings throughout the property. Obviously, this building is already existing, so this building we can show, so you get a sense of the scale of twenty-two, as well as the sort of the corners of where the, this corner here, that's a far corner of the hedges and metal fence that would be around here. This is a sort of before and after. These we've also showed last time, this is the interesting shed that we're doing, which is personally removed from the place that it's in. The idea of the views out and the sort of... A way of view...
Say how much taller the glass house would be from the existing shed, is that what you guys are thinking?
So the existing shed here is 12 feet of the tall peak and 9 feet of the shorter peak and we're proposing the total off-the-ground height of the new one. The building will only be 15 feet, so it's only 25 feet taller than the existing one. You can also get a sense of the four corners, there's one here, one here, one there, one back. But basically, the new structure is to sit exactly in the same footprint, but slightly different organization on the ground. These are views from across the river, just to get a sense of the sort of state district and sort of all within that. This is the property here, this whole square kind of shows the full property and so you get a sense of the... This is the house in transparency that's back, fortunately, the streethouse remains as it was. The shed that's there now is basically nestled in the tree, so it's not really visible currently. Therefore, the back house, here's the more of the island, it's in the same position. This is just, again, sort of more views. This is the driveway from the end of the system, now, the driveway and again, the shed, the shed is here. Neither both, obviously, the same house, it's just from different angles. That's in the middle, block by block, that's the same view of this... Would you have two small requirements to the plans? The security gates that, and these two things are not in the plans that were submitted, the security gates that are proposed, one here and one here. Originally, they should have brick, pink walls on the side. We'd like to basically have it be, everybody should know the same stone wall that's going to be starting up here, so just a change in material. And also, Robert does have a 250-year-old daughter and he, she is, like most kids, looking to play in the yard for a bit. The area here is the deepest part of the hillside and basically just drops off. He's asked if there's a chance that we could put us a low 40-inch-high antique metal fence for safety, essentially. It runs about 100 feet. Right here, there's a stone factory, you can kind of see, sorry, just a path that you can kind of see delineated here, but that sort of kills off, he'd like to throw between those two points. There's also a stone, existing sort of stone wall, so between those two points, just for safety, so it's all going to be safe. So that has not been created, but that would be a immediate question, obviously.
We just wanted to notify everyone that we certainly have plans for it, for the old public hearing on the second and visual simulations to show it, but it's intended to draw the broad eye on something that would be not visually intrusive at all and primarily is to protect the daughter from the stress of this stuff. Just to be immediate right of the details. But that could prove that people have the handout to be... Oh, I have here. This is the report of the, how the... So again, we have copies available for the neighbors and it's just the end of that information.
Those photos were also taken on the same day, but they're already five days ago. Just go to the...
Any questions?
I have one question. I noticed that property line was shot in the north. From the property line... You guys should play the line to the right way of the railroad. Into the railroad.
One other question. Stone wall, is that because it's historic? The permit to rebuild the stone wall?
Yes, it is because it's on the state designated road and any modification of a fence within, I think it's 50 feet of the property line. So again, we want to do this in full observation, we're going to commission, it seems that the special permit requirement doesn't apply.
The government didn't exactly tell us that they would need to restore the wall. I think they didn't.
Well, I guess we missed our chance for that.
Which roadway is going to be the primary access to one of Carmel Drive or one of the shares? Or don't we know yet?
Well, I think Mr. Duffy owns rights over both driveways. I think as a matter of practicality, he has a place for using the north of his driveway, but both driveways are being maintained and there's a proposal to have a gate on both the north and the south driveway, well, within the private portions, as well as a gate which would not be locked at the exit of the Ferncliff Nursing Home property onto Carmel Drive because Mr. Duffy has found that some cars get lost as to where they're going and end up in his driveway and then have to turn around in a circular driveway and there have also been some situations of pedestrians coming onto his property. So it's just deemed appropriate for security, just be able to have that. Certainly, that may never be locked and access to all of the gates would be given to emergency service.
As you sort of invited comments from the public, not strictly the public hearing this evening, so you don't have votes that you don't want to?
Well, it is a continuation of the public hearing that started on April 7th.
On the application for being superseded. Michael, I would suggest that the board, number one, I review the application factors that was needed to the extent that is necessary to basically be in a complete, complete package of working with the second board and scheduling a public hearing as suggested by... There is a body in the supplemental groups today, a draft of suitable resolution which deals with the amended and new applications for that resolution to be considered consideration.